And we consider discussing act upon the dissolution of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force. The purpose of this Smithfield Equity Task Force was to advise the town and develop recommendations that further advance diversity, equity, and inclusion in the town of Smithfield. This has been going on since 2001. And I see we have a lot of public comment. I just asked everyone, say, May, if they have the progress. We have a nice adult conversation about the situation.
Will we public comment now?
Well, let's before we dive into it, let me just say that the side funding agenda kind of came a little bit of a surprise to me when I came here when I saw it last week. The discussions that we've had in the past that was always about kind of coming up with a game plan for what we wanted the Diversity Equity Inclusion Task Force to come up with and present to the town council. And from our perspective, it's been almost our lack of response to follow up. I don't think this is appropriate to dissolve the commission. I would be asking and urging the council to table this motion. I think that the Diversity Equity Inclusion Task Force stimulates conversations that are difficult to have, but they're very important to have. I firmly believe that this commission serves a very important purpose to the progression of this town in terms of our acceptance, in terms of us being welcoming. And I think that a lot of what comes into the confusion with the diversity equality is many people confuse the term equality with assimilation. Nobody is telling anyone how you have to live. Nobody is forcing anyone to believe one way or another. If you don't like this committee, don't go to the meetings. Say, well, is that, that's nothing to do with you. It doesn't affect you. Other than that, I'm looking forward to hearing very enlightened discussions coming from the community. And I'd like to make a motion to table this item.
Yeah, there's a motion. Is there a second?
There a second on this?
Because if there isn't a second, I would have a different motion.
There a second on this? That's a gal.
Okay, at this point, we would see an order for discussion. The way I read the original resolution establishing this task force, it is a task force which was designed to have, to be, as the word "task force" means, that is designed to have a regain and end, and that there was no ending for it. I think that was a part of it. The task force was supposed to report to the town council with its recommendations on advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion. No recommendations, to my knowledge, have been received by the town council, either the prior town council or this one. This town council met with the task force in a workshop setting on April 11th, at which time we expressed our concerns that there was nothing being produced by this task force. And so now, two years and six months have passed, and we have yet to receive any recommendation from the task force. I'm thinking that maybe the problem is that this is a task force that's very heavy with government entities. And maybe, you know, a group like this should not have been set up, having all of these. There are only three residents on the task force, and the rest are all government employees, the town manager, the chief of police, school committee member, school department people. And to me, it seems that this is just not an appropriate design for a task force of this nature. So what I would recommend to the town council is what I would... A motion is made. Second, so it has to be a vote on that. Then you can vote on the other. Okay, well, what I will recommend is that we allow the task force to provide us with the recommendation by the end of this year. And that the task force, this task force terminate, and that that will allow a private group to form, which I think is a more appropriate group. And then that group can come to the town council, what is motivating the living concerns that they have about problems of this nature in the town. I think, I mean, I think that, to me, makes a lot more sense and would actually perhaps give us some progress in this area rather than having this government-dominated task force, which I really, I really don't understand what the whole purpose of this task force was from the beginning.
One thing that I can agree to, Mr. Vice President, is that when we put together the task force, one of the reasons why I'm actually motioning to, would like to hold on to this item, I'm sorry, table it, is we do need to reformulate the composition of this advisory commission. You know, with all of the boards and commissions that we have in existence in Smithfield, we have over 30 right now, they exist as resident boards to advise the council on how to proceed. Having a board commission of, you know, town employees advising the town is not really, you know, the best concept. But it's still, to the vice president's point, to me, it's still not worthy of dissolving this committee at this time or putting a timeline on the committee to achieve this. I would, I feel that by holding, by tabling the item tonight, it will give us time to get together with the board commission again to formulate what the plan is going forward. And then we can continue to work with them. But in terms of allowing the committee to go back to the residents, you know, one of the reasons why this task force came into fruition was because it was privatized. And by putting it into the town wall to legitimize the cost, in my, in my mind, I think that it is a legitimate concern any residents of the town. And I, I'll still stand by tabling this item tonight.
You're tabling to... To what? Just for the next meeting?
No, table it indefinitely.
I would not support that. Is there a motion or is there a second? You can go around and vote now.
Is there discussion?
We've had a discussion, almost in favor of the motion to table, signified by saying aye. Aye. Almost opposed.
No.
No. So is there another motion? I'm, I can't really think of which I guess. Is there another motion on table? I move that the Smithfield Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force be required to submit its recommendations, if any, to the town council by December 31st, 2023. And that at which point the task force's objectives having been completed in accordance with the resolution of Basel 2021, that at that point, the task force would be terminated. Second. Is there some other question?
I would like to hear some other people that are there on the floor. Do you have any other comments?
You want to come down? More questions?
Thanks, Steve. Ben Case, 424 for Drive, a member of the Smithfield School Committee, also a member, a representative of the School Committee on the Task Force. Mr. Hanani, Mr. Kilduff, I think you hit it, nail on the head on terms of the composition. It's certainly an issue. It's definitely not a challenge. But I think I'm up here just to give a little more overview of where we started, where we've been, and where the plan is to go forward. So the task force was created in April 2021. The mission is to bring together community members, town leaders, departments, department heads, with the mission of helping make our community a more welcoming, inviting place for not just our residents, but also businesses. The creation of it demonstrated our commitment by the town council to the residents of Smithfield. It was a proactive step that has actually served, I don't know if you're aware of this, as a model for other communities. Since the creation of it, other similar task force or standing committees have been formed in places like Darlington and East Bryant, to name a few. This work's not easy, and it's not quick. It's difficult, but it's necessary. It's absolutely necessary work for our community. To make it a better place, we are a wonderful town. I moved here, moved my family here. Sometimes it's a school here because I love this town. But we should always be looking forward. How can we make it a better place, a welcoming place for all? And so continuing the support of this work or some future iteration of it sends a message that you guys support making this community a better place, always looking forward. So some questions have come up about kind of what has been accomplished so far, the workshop. Although somewhat tense, I think was actually a good discussion because it helped refocus our efforts a little bit. So a little summary of kind of what has happened so far with the task force, we've really accomplished a couple of things. One is education. We started as a group of department heads and community members, and we began bringing in a variety of groups to educate us. This is tough stuff. It's very difficult stuff. So we brought in a whole variety of speakers from in the community, outside the community. We've started developing community partnerships. Maybe steps. We have a lot more to go. But we've heard from our police force, resource officers. We've had a world indifference program in Galway to come present and share with us the work that they're doing. The library has come and shared with us the programs that they've created. We've had a presentation from the assistant superintendent regarding the equity audit that was done at the school and how that could potentially be something that we can model and utilize as a town. Tri-county Committee, which works closely with the town, came to discuss services they could extend to help us with our work. We had Vera Wills, Wills, you know her, Vera Wills, I think, who is a DEI consultant who came on her own initiative. She was not paid. We didn't have funding. But she did come to give us some guidance on kind of how to move forward. We met with the neighborhood health plan. We've met recently with the Bryant University DEI office. And we've been helping with East Smithfield Library as well. That's the laying the groundwork, kind of learning, getting started. But it's been tough. None of us are experts in this, and this definitely takes time. We have organized community events, not as many as we like, but we did have, had two, a chocolate walk event where we've had upwards of 500 people come, spread messages of kindness and such outside the sidewalks at Galway Middle School. But I absolutely agree and acknowledge, we've stumbled, for sure. I think we got the luck pulled out from us on one of our goals where we didn't have the funding to pursue a kind of a townwide audit. We stumbled figuring out how to form an RFP, and basically were told we didn't have that funding available to us. We have to regroup, and regrouping is tough. And as you mentioned, it is very government-heavy. It's tough putting our department heads in a position, in a paid position. They can't really act on their own accord because they're representing the town. It's just very awkward to have three community members on there. So I would definitely love to see a kind of reorganization, get many more community members on board, having in addition of our library, libraries and such. We took to heart, Mr. Hanani, when we talked about kind of, you know, where people, what have we done. And so we haven't had a meeting since May. We were supposed to have one. Two weeks ago I got canceled. Since then, over the summer, several members have worked very hard to start really exploring, gathered research, meeting with a variety of new people, and have since put together a draft strategic plan based on the goals that we have. It hasn't been discussed yet with the task force. We were going to do that in our last meeting. It's a draft. It's, here's our goals, here's a match of steps. What do the members want to add to it to move forward? So we're hoping to do that. But essentially, I just, I do agree that maybe we do need to move in the future toward more of a standing committee. I think with many more community members. But the work of the task force should continue until that can step up and take, take on that work. But I just want to remind everyone that this work is, if not isolate Smithfield, this is work that's ongoing throughout the nation. And I think some people have different concepts of kind of what the work entails. And I think, Councilman Tom, we had this conversation at the workshop, really, what is the mission? The mission is to make a great community better, even better, always looking to make us better, make it more welcoming to all people. Young, old, male, female, able-bodied, people with disabilities, those with mental health issues, people with intellectual disabilities, people of color, people of different ethnicities, different faiths, sexual orientations, different socioeconomic levels. I think this work needs to continue. And if it does transition into more of a standing committee, that's wonderful. But a commitment by the town council to say, we recognize that we want to make our community a better place. We all haven't had the same experience in Smithfield. Some people have incredible experience, a wealthy experience, and some others have it. And we want to make sure as many people can enjoy the fruits of this town as much as possible. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Sandy Lawrence. I live at Highview Gardens, Smithfield. I'm a comment. Mr. Kilduff spoke of being open to conversation. He wants to keep the task force. And he wants to have an open conversation. However, I emailed the committee, the board, the council in August, and he did not respond to me. With some just concerns. Several of you did, and he did not respond to have that open conversation or even thank you for writing to me. I did not receive anything. So then I, we sent an email and said, I have not heard back. And his email was to come up and come to the meeting and discuss it. And he just tabled it. His goal was to table it. So I don't appreciate that. So we need to think a little bit beyond ourselves and going further. Respond to town people because you're concerned about them, but I didn't get a response. Secondly, diversity is something I care about. I care about people. I did write to the committee stating that I do feel that Smithfield is very opening, open. There are some people that maybe are never going to change their mind. There are some whites that are not maybe what you want them to be. But I feel during this task force, when I looked at the minutes, I didn't see anything happening in the minutes. I didn't see a goal being achieved, and I didn't see a measurable goal. So my question is, what is the measurable goal? How are you going to measure what you're doing in this task force? What is the end result going to be? You say it's a great community. It's going to be better. What do you mean by better? Because people do here. They keep moving here. We keep building here. So that was my question when I had, and question and comment, when I had emailed the committee.
Hi there. I'm Lucy Dorsey, 278 Stillwater Road. So to answer Tammy, Tammy and I go way back because she's been a parent at the verge, run the principal, and also have my children in the school system. So measurable would be that there are no more racial incidences, that there are no kids being called the N-word or other words. That the families of Smithfield stood up at the equity audit when we discussed it at the school committee meeting, and they shared their personal experiences. It may be welcome and opening to people who look like me, for white people. It's not as opening to people of color. It's not as opening to people who have a different sexual orientation. And so that would be that measurable goal, that we don't have incidences of hate in the schools, in the town, in other people's minds. We're not going to change everybody's mind, but if you think Smithfield is great, it needs to be great for everyone. It needs to be welcoming for every family who wants to live here, who moves here. There shouldn't be some people pulled over by police and other people not pulled over. There shouldn't be people being called, as I said, I'm a principal. I'm also married to a beautiful black man. I have these beautiful interracial children. As the principal, there's some people who have called other people the N-word, right? I want a beautiful school. My children themselves have experienced that racial tones and words and discrimination. And I would assume that every person on this council and every person sitting out here would not want any child to experience that, any family to experience that. And honestly, if you are someone who lives in this town and doesn't want someone who looks differently than you to be in this town, that's who we want to move. That's who we don't want. Because we want to be welcoming. We want to be inclusive in the schools, in the neighborhoods, in the town. Everywhere that we go, we want to see everyone feel that they are included, that they are safe, that they are valued. That's what we preach in the Smithfield College Schools, and I certainly hope the town will preach that. I agree that the council needs to be, the task force should have more residents, right? Absolutely. But to then say that it has to end at a certain point, that's where we need that machine needs to be refilled. The town task force, the DEI task force specifically asked you all for money. They were denied that money. They've all said, we are not the experts. We want to learn from an expert so we can create those measurable goals, so we can make sure that we are held accountable and that we are making progress in this town.
Thank you.
Justin, 78th and School Road. So, you know, listening here, I didn't pull it down. Can you hear me? This isn't good for, I... I think that a really key point is that this isn't work that ends or should just end. This type of work, I feel, is critical work that should be woven really into the fabric of our town. And in order for that to happen, I think there needs to be, it needs to be a town initiative, whether that is in the form of a freestanding committee, perhaps that would be a better venue or format for this type of work, then that's great. But I do believe that the DEI task force or committee or, you know, whatever it is that it's called, is vital for promoting diversity and equity in our community. It's crucial for addressing important issues. Like I said, it should remain a town initiative endorsed by the council to show collective commitment to these values, ensuring that there's also needed structure, accountability, and proper resources. More, as Ben mentioned, more progress has been made over the summer, forming these positive relationships and partnerships with local libraries and other town entities and businesses, and working with more high-profile businesses that we have within town. Completely disbanding this or putting an ending to this work would be premature and would disrupt these efforts. Positive and forward-thinking work like this takes time. And long-term outcomes may not be immediately clear. The continued support, possibly, and I would hope, with a consultant or guidance from some of these established partnerships will help. Our town task force members, including the dedicated volunteers, who courageously spoke out in support of our town's LGBT youth during school committee meetings, exemplify what a DEI task force or committee needs. Their powerful statements questioning what was happening at that time and noting the importance of perception and protecting the culture and the reputation of our town and of our schools and of our youth across the board are invaluable. Let's maintain the town's active involvement in this critical effort and continue this positive work because quite frankly, I feel that it's needed now or never. Thank you.
They've been swallowing a lot of sound, but if you could stop paying attention to all these people. I worked in industry where we had, I mean, you name it, the racial background we had, we all go along because we're in each other. Oh, yeah, I know. We hate these discussions and things like that. We're solid, we're normal. This business has become, we have to get involved. We have to have committees, and we have to have task forces. I'd like to applaud you.
Thank you for being able to tell.
I just said what I had to do.
Thank you very much. I asked to be a delegate. You said that. I don't know why you did that, sir.
Your...
Thank you.
Hello. I want to thank the town council for having this discussion because I think these discussions can be productive and are useful. So as some of you may know, I was sort of involved in the beginning of the discussion. I don't know if you've seen it so far. But I haven't been particularly involved. I went back and I looked through all of the minutes and kind of like made little notes. There have been good discussions had. There have been things that are good conversations to bring up, even though they may be difficult. There has been good work done by this task force. It may not be things that are concrete, but none of these conversations would have been had had it not been for the task force. So just to sort of take a look at it from that point. I think these conversations, it's like this room, the conversations that are had in the task force can help move the town forward. Things don't go away by not speaking about it. It makes people uncomfortable. That's just the benefits of this. So I just want to say, like, I do think that there's been advancement and progress, and this is another piece of the progress, talking about how can we be appreciated with the task force. It'll be back in the notes, just as an outsider. So there was no real leadership. It's a brand-new idea, and so, and it's kind of novel. And so to have expectations that a group of people that are completely non-experts taking on a new kind of thing and thinking that they're going to produce great work quickly or just, you know, have like these big, big things happening. I think it's, without leadership, there's a lack of, there's been a lack of communication, I think, between the town council and the task force. I think that the town council should have more conversations and perhaps provide a little bit more relationships to talk about, like, take a look at this piece of our community or that piece of our community or ask questions. Because the same, asking, the town council is saying they want recommendations from the task force. Like, there's so many topics under the DEI, right? So it's such a broad, broad request that ending three months when there's no leadership, there's no one, no consultants sort of guiding, right? No one here is an expert. This is new stuff. So I think that that's not realistic. We get the discussion of how to... Again, the discussion of how to move this forward, maybe adjusting the committee membership. So, I think the expectations have been outsized. I think there's been a lack of communication. There's been a lack of financial support, to be realistic. All these are solid, so discussion and compromise. I really do think that these discussions and this work is worth doing and continue to do and having it supported by the town government is important. It's, like, some, like I think Sean said, it's validating, I don't know if it's of that, to have it as a government entity of some sort. I don't think it should be ended. I think the conversation is over, continuing to have and really craft this conversation. Well, I don't do a better. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Does anyone have a comment?
What was that?
Does anyone have a comment?
Yes.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Susan Grange. I live in Southfield. My kids have gone to both groups of schools. My great kids have gone through some of the schools. I have to tell you, this is the best town that could ever bring kids up there. And I think some of this stuff needs to be left to the kids because they have to give it a lot. The kids are doing a really good job of making their way through and accepting other people. And I think that's what this whole thing is coming down to. We're diverse, our town is like diverse. Our kids have become diverse, and I think we've done a really good job. So, I want to think all of you, the way that the town has been going, because I'm very happy that, um, I think moving forward, we have to be extremely careful about what we're doing.
Thank you.
Joe Tapi, twenty eight, North English. Obviously, my comments have nothing to do with anything, but my daughter, then, so. I had this long spiel that I was mentioning tonight, but, you know, redoing the task force, I have a couple of points. Politically, this group is not diverse. Show me a conservative member on this task force. So, that's a huge contradiction in what you're supposed to stand for. So, instead, you have one group controlling the narrative, but there's more. My daughter spoke up at one of these task force meetings, and she was greeted the next morning by a long knife sticking the tree right outside her front door. Was it a message? Agree with us or else? I see no outrage when this incident was reported. My daughter was a person of color or gay. This would be considered a hate crime and down the front page pro jail, but she's working straight, so nothing. I think at ending these task force meetings and exchange of ideas, people are not supposed to agree on everything, as I said, with the council. Not as everything is supposed to be a five-nothing vote and everything goes through. Same thing with the school committee. And one of the things that we have is any contrary opinion is met with something that was extreme. And, you know, that's why I was up to disband this task force. But I'm willing to see what the new task force should maybe be made up of, and I think there should be conservative voices on that, on that group.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak? Anyone else want to speak?
Yeah. I'll just make a quick comment, yeah. I do want to just advise that we are in the process of reviewing all boards and commissions in case anyone thinks here, you know, we're saying we guys out, that's not the case. You know, I support having a like-minded, pro-citizen, you know, get together and do what they feel they need to do, you know, whatever, whatever goal it is in regards to the subject matter. You know, I think the task force is being of good intentions, as I think many things are. You know, it seemed to be, you know, an knee-jerk reaction to one specific incident that was investigated, adjudicated appropriately by the police. That's their job. You know, I did attend that session with the task force, and, you know, I asked two to three times, you know, what are the goals? What does it look like? What does this look like in Smithfield? I was met with no answers. You know, the only answer I received from a school department official is that she would like to see zero, like Ms. Dorsey also said, you know, that they don't want to see any more racial incidents and this and that. Of course, we would love that. That is, that is not an achievable goal. There are always going to have children who say stupid, and adults for that matter, who say stupid things, who act like idiots. You know, you're never going to change everyone's behavior. And I do not think, the point is for me, the government does not need to be involved in this and trying to change people's behavior or showing everyone, regardless of how, you know, you identify or whatever, showing them respect and kindness. That's common sense. You know, but the government does not need to be involved in changing people's behavior. You know, it's a quote that I, from an article I read, you know, the government's involved in too much already, let's face it. You know, we want, we want to, you know, eliminate some things. So, government is responsible for creating and sustaining markets, enforcing contracts, protecting private property, and producing systems of education and infrastructure that allow commerce to function efficiently. That, to me, is what government should be involved in, and really, that's it. So, you know, I understand why we have to be focused on all of our inherent differences when we can be focusing on what we have become. We all want to live free, prosperous, and happy lives without the government's intervention. Let's work to promote that instead. So, like I said, I'm all for, you know, wanting to have a citizen group, but I don't support the government being involved in this.
Thank you.
Yes, and I would echo that and say that, you know, the end of the task force does not mean the end of the work to make Smithfield a more welcoming place. And that's everyone's goal. And this task force model just doesn't work. So, why not have something that does work? Why not have something, we don't need something that has government involvement. A community, a true community task force to bring their concerns to the council or to the school committee. A, a, a community task force that's truly representative of the community could be much more effective than this, than a task force that's constituted in this manner. So, I think that, you know, I think that we can do, we can do a lot better, a better job in, in making Smithfield a welcoming community. We can have a much better, a much better model without government involvement. You know, the government, this town council is not the government. Town Hall is not the government. You are the government. You are the town. We're not just the government. It's not just the government, Bob, it's elected. It's you. You are the town. And, you know, we rely on you to tell us what the, what the issues are that we need to address as a town council.
That's what we just, that's what we just told. That's what we just, that's what we said. You said he's out of territory.
Excuse me. Sorry. Do you want to speak? Do you want to speak?
You can speak again.
Do you want to? Yeah?
I don't, I don't understand why, I just, you have thirty committees. You just said, "We have thirty committees." That you're reviewing these thirty committees, and so, I'm looking at what you just stopped because you don't want to say it. So, you just said, "We have thirty committees." You're reviewing all other committees, or someone said it, reviewing. So, what is it about this DBI task force, this committee, that you're trying to shut this down? That's what I don't understand. I said, "We're reviewing all committees." We have works to start with the planning board, we have one with the budget board, I plan on having more, I plan on going to every meeting of every board because, you know, that's what, that's what I feel I should do. I mean, you know, because I see things that, you know, may not necessarily be, you know, vulnerable instances or this and that. I think it's good to take a fresh look at everything. And that's all I was trying to say, I'm not, because this is on the agenda, at least for me, it's not because I'm trying to say that. The committee members, the people who have served, are not even informed about this coming on to, or to be, you know, to be gotten rid of, basically. So, how did it even come to be that this particular, out of all the thirty committees that you have, that this would be the one that you're trying to get rid of?
I should have emailed everyone out, because I went away Friday night when I found out it was on the agenda. I was going to be, that wasn't wrong. But I apologize.
Right. But is that, it doesn't have to come on until Friday to be there for, I'm sure that you had other discussions about it.
It's going to be advertised on the Friday before the Tuesday meeting. It goes on the Secretary of State's website. The agenda internally is finalized the Wednesday before the council.
It seems odd that it would be this task force, this committee, that this group is trying to get rid of. But we want to be open and inclusive and welcoming, and people feel valued and safe. People don't feel valued and safe. And if it's one person who doesn't feel valued and safe, you should care about that. That should not let you sleep at night, that even one of your citizens doesn't feel valued and safe. You should want to do something about that. You should have task forces and committees because not everyone feels safe and welcome and included in this town.
Thank you.
Chairman W. 990 Avenue, also chairman of the school committee. Excuse me. I, earlier this year, we had discussions in school committees, quite a few meetings, and dealt with the issue regarding transgender students, whether or not parents should be notified of gender change or not. We had a lot of discussion on it, and a lot of people did it in a very simple manner. And they, on both sides of the issue, they let us know what their thoughts were. There's a small group of people that took to the idea that they should be out calling everybody victims, that they should tell people who did not like the situation that they should move out of town. There were people that made attempts or suggestions against school committee members' employment or their families. There were, through the comments against a certain parent regarding his family, one 's father in town. That's not welcoming, that's not inclusive, just because people disagreed with one issue. Now, no matter what your side of that issue is, we cannot function if we're not going to allow open debate, open discussion among people in this town. If we're not going to be inclusive of ideas, then we might as well be exclusive. I had a lot be in the town where just because you have a single idea, right away you're pushed off to the side. One of the reasons is important for some of these people that were bringing these things up were people that were associated with Thomas Smithfield. And that's not good, including a few on the task force. Not all the task force, but a few of them were. That's not inclusive. That's not what we want to do. The second thing is, tonight I'm listening, I hear people say they don't know how to do it, they need to bring in experts. We form a committee, and we have to bring the committee up to speed on something like that. That's not how we do a committee. The people in our town, they should have their opinions, and that's good, and their opinions should come forth, be presented to you in some form of, of format, if you need to act on it, if you need to act on it. But might make them intelligent on the side of it. And that's the first time I really ever heard something like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, but I have to push back just a little bit on what Mr. Tapi said in terms of, I agree that these discussions can feel very strange and uncomfortable for people. And I get the, you're making me to talk about it, the government is making us talk about it. It is a complicated issue. But to say that our leadership has no role in trying to make society better at a social level, I mean, I just have to ask you, like, the Civil Rights Act, the Voting Act, that was the federal government dictating how people had to behave going forward. Of course, there was a lot of pushback, but, so, I'm just, to say that there's no role for elected leadership in these discussions, I just don't agree with it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Yes, yes.
Justin, seven eighteen school road. I just wanted to add too that I still, again, I just feel like something is kind of missing here. There's a word missing, a point a little bit. It's, again, and I can't remember exactly how Ben articulated it, but it's, it's not about trying to make people, you know, buy into, you know, one certain thing, right, or having the government try to take that. That's really not what it's about. You know, there's been many, 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 many towns who have formed DBI committees, and there has been a lot of positive community, you know, it's kind of coming together to, whether it's through education or, you know, working with local libraries. This is also why, you know, large entities have whole-time staff that are dedicated to this particular, you know, to DBI, because, you know, at the heart of it, right, it's attracting and retaining good people, talented people, people from all different backgrounds that you want to feel safe and welcome and included in the community so that the community can continue to thrive. I mean, I think that that's the point, and I do think that it's a good idea to make sure that you have community involvement and citizens' involvement. However, I also feel that it needs to be some type of a partnership with the town. I mean, you offer town leadership. You really do help to drive the culture of what the town of Smithfield is really going to look like and feel like, both from a citizen's, you know, residents who live here and also out within too. So, I just wanted to use a thing. Thanks. Susie, Alpha eighty-five, Gold Road. I don't want to say much because so much has come already very eloquently, but it concerns me a bit because I'm seeing a pattern with this town council of not working collaboratively with boards and commissions. And I say that because many members of the task force that's been stated this evening were not even notified that this was even an agenda item. And it's unacceptable, quite frankly. The town council member who asked to have it on the agenda, I don't know who that was, could have prior to. If you're not going to listen to your town and commission members, how are you going to listen to the residents in the community? So, it works, the concern which are very valid for members of the town council to not contact any member of the task force who happen to be your colleagues in government and three of your residents, prior to putting a dissolution or dissolving the actual task force, and the committee is disrespectful and a slavish phase to the structure and very nature of why our committees and commissions exist. It happened with the door park committee. There was a vote by the town council to put in a freeze for the door park without talking or collaborating with the door park committee. It's just a pattern that's from this town council. So, it's unacceptable. The town manager, the town council president, of course, who put it out, put it on the agenda, could have a decency and respect to at least alert the members of the task force if this was even an issue or going to be an agenda item tonight. So, at the most basic level, again, if the town council is not going to work collaboratively and listen to the commission members themselves, it concerns the committee not listening to the residents. I'm not going to go into the history of the task force, but there were three tasks in them, two tasks in them.
but there were three council members, two council members right now that were part of the original tension of that task force. There are hundreds of people who attended the forums that we had early on as a result of a particular incident, yes. But since then, you know, the youth council that we had before you this evening, I mean, on the most basic level, having the very nature of this task force, send a message to our residents that we are committed that is welcoming, that people can feel heard. We know this work is hard, and it takes time. It takes difficult conversations, it takes leadership. This progress did not happen overnight. I think the very nature of the early work of the task force, and hearing Ben's update, I mean, you know, Mr. Iannotti, I commend you for being a town council member that is willing to hear what the task force has planned and sort of work into a different iteration. But no one called Ben or any member of the task force to say, hey, what have you been doing? So just because they haven't brought it to, doesn't mean you can't put the phone and ask them what progress they're making. The youth council that was here before you this evening has sponsored multiple chocolate walks events with hundreds of people, anti-bullying presentations, the mural project under the Stillwater Bridge. They distributed pins at the high school. I mean, the list goes on and on of the various events and things that our youth have done in this, in this area, in conjunction with this task force. So it's so ironic to have your youth council present here at the start of the evening, that at the end of the evening, you aren't to dissolve a committee or commission that our youth had actually been, been part of, or youth commission was part of that task force in the very first forum that we had. In fact, they hosted their own youth forum as part of it, the early incident. So it's just very heartening. But I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that after this evening, that members of the town council, number one, will collaborate with the reports, the commission, the task force members, not come inside them and govern heavy-handed and just make decisions unilaterally without collaboration. And number two, that we all consider ongoing conversation about how this work can progress and be better. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the inside on the table? Can you repeat a motion on this, or I don't know what it is?
If I start denying on, you want to give the task, task force the opportunity to present recommendations to the council by December thirty-first of this year? And then the task force will be dissolved?
Was there a second on this? Is there one?
No, it's out of the way.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those not favoring, neck?
No.
Any more motion on this, or is there a motion without a free to...
I like to have a motion on this, okay?
That we have another public hearing on this. And then go back and review the committee, as multiple people had said, that there was two government officials on it, that we open up to residents of the town of Smithfield. And I agree with your councilman about having a report. They've had two and a half years, but no report. But I think we're partly to blame because there's no direction on how we're going to handle this thing. I sat on the juvenile hearing board for a number of years. There's problems everywhere. There's problems everywhere. Black, white, green, red. I do agree that everyone wants to come to Smithfield. So it feels a great town, very convenient. But I think the public needs to be more involved, as you indicated. So why don't we, why don't we make a motion to December thirty-first, come up with a report? At that time, the report, the council reviews it, the report, and then sets up another committee, a public committee, not a government committee?
How do we have the authority to settle what's given to the committee if it's not the government?
Right, what are you concerned with, committee?
So you're saying that you mean another committee that the government's involved in? That would be, you know?
I can't, I don't want to put words, I don't want to put words in the council members' mouth, but I think what is referred to as creating a committee with more citizen participation in it rather than town hall members being on it.
So it's a government commission, but it's just comprised of public, the public instead of the government?
Just like the planning board.
And designing.
And zoning board.
All that.
I think I can go, I agree with that. If it doesn't set it, it doesn't terminate, it doesn't get rid of anything, and just continues it going, and then helps us restructure at the end. I'll second that. Any more to say on that?
How could we agree to that if we don't have set goals? And I would pose the question again. I mean, in tangible terms, if somebody could just answer this question in tangible terms, what does diversity, equity, inclusion look like in this town hall right now? As an example? Is there anyone that would be able to explain that to me? Because I don't understand.
So that would be in the report that they're going to come to you with?
Well, I'd like to know now, because we're holding on to it.
Yeah, well, they don't have that prepared, because you didn't ask for that.
Well, my point is...
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
I know.
You have a problem.
My point is that, you know, there are a lot of advocates for this in this room this evening. And I would assume that you would be able to advise what that looks like in real life. And I'm just trying to get an example of what that looks like if somebody could please help me out with that.
I think, I think if we get the report, review the report, whatever recommendations are there, we can make. And then we set up another committee with less overhead to it.
Right.
It's not rocket science.
Why don't we look at the report, and then based on the information in the report, then decide whether we want to have a committee that's like the planning board or, you know, that's a committee set up by the town council, or whether we would rather recommend a, than a private group forum based on, and we'll look at the report first instead of deciding...
That's basically what I'm saying. Let's look at the report. If they come up with a report, they don't come up with a report, well...
Which we don't need to have a motion for, because this has been, this twice has been shut down, so they can just submit the report to us and we can review it and go from there.
Well, again, that is what the task force still active. We review it, and we make others as an example. For the big, we have a motion at least, you have a motion at least made. Show a second. Oh, what?
So can we work that one?
Sorry.
Remember, just so we know, wants to set up a hearing for the council to review the report, that's going to be submitted by the DDI task force. It's going to be open to the residents. And the council can then determine if they want to set up another board or a committee, or if you want to use it, or shoot, or separate, or a commission on its own.
And when's your report supposed to be?
Once the day, I'm sorry, December thirty-first.
So we're having a public hearing on December thirty-first? Or we're having a report, and then once the public hearing?
I don't know what the date for the public hearing, but the report is to be issued by the day of the year.
Oh, it's gonna be the first week in January, once you find the background.
Sixty-nine.
Yeah, your meetings, your meetings in January will be, right now, technically, you would, it would be the first of third, Tuesday of the month, January second.
Second, second meeting in January.
So if they, if you're given until the end of the year to submit a report, December thirty-first?
I didn't know if it was just September thirty-first.
The purpose of the public hearing is to either decide to report with another committee or a private, leaving some private, so that one understand?
With the theme in January.
Do you think, do you see, I want to say something?
Yes. Name and measure again.
Okay, can we settle this, please, before we move on? So to try to answer your questions, Tapi, so diversity in this room? For the percentage of people that we have here of different economic backgrounds, different ethnic backgrounds, cultural backgrounds, I mean, skin color, right? Is this room, do we see a certain percentage of the people that are lower numbers in the community? So are they, so that's diversity, right? In this room, are we fully representing the diversity of Smithfield? Probably not. We're just seeing youth, right? Equity, are, are these places of power equally accessible to people? Do they feel that they're equally accessible to people, right? And inclusion, I would just argue, do you feel welcome, right? To those people that are, again, lower number percentages of our community, socially, economically, age-wise, whatever? Do they feel welcome? So that's just me attempting to answer your question. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we have a motion for the second one.
All those favoring that?
My?
Aye.
Interesting.
Would you carry the floor?